I would like to call this meeting of the Board of Education of Regional School District 12 to order at seven o'clock. I would like our secretary to determine a forum and take attendance. Oh, would you? You got it? You want to look on mine?
Yeah, do you have it? You've got paper copy?
Pass that over if you could just return it when you're done since that's all my stuff.
I sure will. Okay, Joe Abdella, John Boniudo, Greg Cava, Victoria Thalen, Stephanie Colnick here, Angelo Macarulo, Alex McNaughton, Justin Ongley, Jen Poddy, Jane Sargent. Not here, Pete Tagley and Mary Weber.
Yeah, thank you. We have four.
We need to have a conversation about this setup. Okay, um. Thank you very much. We have a forum then. We have eleven people present. I know that Jane's not here. All right, next item on the agenda is public comment on matters that are on the agenda. Curtis, if you wouldn't mind going up to the podium. So we can capture your voice on the microphone.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Yeah, thank you. It's nice to be here, uh, early in the season, see some new faces. Uh, I'm here as first selection of Bridgewater. And I'm here to, uh, register my interest and some concerns about the item on the agenda concerning building repairs in the future. And I look forward to hearing some of the discussion. We recently met with Mark down in Bridgewater and, uh, a couple of people who former board member. Uh, my wife Julie, who I think you all know, and also Carolyn Dwyer. And I've been involved with the buildings here for years, uh, ten years to be exact. And know them pretty well, and I've had several tours, uh, with Don, and I think uh, I'm interested in it and I'm interested in it from the point of view of what it takes to fix and comply with uh, the requirements of the state. And also how that can be presented to taxpayers in our towns that, uh, makes sense. And so I look forward to involvement and, uh, Mark suggested or we suggested and agreed that uh, we would have a meeting of the three amigos, which is the three selectmen of our towns. And Don and maybe Mark and other people and go over the, uh, deficiencies in the schools. And what you'd like to do. So we look forward to being involved and thank you for your service and a lot of you I have known for years and I appreciate your work and time. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Um, anyone else?
Carolyn Dwyer calling in from Zoom. If you can hear me.
Can we hear them? Can they speak? Okay.
Great. Can everyone hear me? Yes?
I can hear you.
Great. Everyone else?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, sorry, I'm not there in person tonight. My name is Carolyn Dwyer. I live in Bridgewater. Uh, I'm a co-chair of SOS. A parent of two Burnham alumni, founder of our successful aftercare program. And I'm also the orchestrator of our Burnham tuition in program. My comments tonight pertain to the architect line item. It's been eight quiet and wonderful years since this region was almost torn apart. Since then, we've seen our elementary school grow in the opposite direction of the predictions. And families continue to move here for our school and even pay to come to our public schools. And we now have our distinguished cornerstone in our agri-science program at the high school. In the past few weeks, we've been troubled to hear about field trips to shiny new buildings in Lower Fairfield County. And people suddenly telling us our schools are falling down. We have seen no plans of the sort coming out of this board's long-range planning group, which we have watched for years. If the schools are suddenly falling down, it is either a result of the lack of accountability by the region for basic maintenance, which has been a decades-long problem, or a gross exaggeration of the actual condition of the schools, or both. Tonight, we know you will see one RFP from one individual with astronomical costs. We hope the board will listen to the actual boots on the ground like Don O'Leary and the selectmen, as our selectmen said, to formulate what could be a possible referendum of any needed repairs. What we do know is that any build-to-new plans have always failed, as have any plans to consolidate to one building. We know our elementaries continue to outperform their peers throughout the state. We should be thrilled that not only are people paying to send their children to a public school, but the region continues to benefit financially each year to the tune of 1.5 million dollars. The board should spend more time traveling to its schools in this region as opposed to traveling to other towns to visit shiny unrealistic options. We are not Darien, we are not New Canaan, and we should be past the point of wasting money on architects, swampland, et cetera, to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars, only to go nowhere. We are a small agricultural area with many of its own advantages. The grass is currently green in Region 12. We will not fall for the sky is falling drama or all the old failed arguments. We are willing to work with you to get a reasonable renovation package passed, but not a bad faith effort to push a fantasy on our taxpayers. Some of you are newer to the board, and I hope you will take time to learn the lessons of the past to pave a realistic way forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public on matters on tonight's agenda? I see no one else in the room. Is there anyone else on the screen? Apparently not. Okay, we'll move on. Uh, the consent agenda, there are minutes of the Board of Education of September 11th and September 18th. Does anyone have any comments or proposed, or does anyone want to take that off the the off of the consent agenda in order to discuss those minutes? Or any questions or any proposed changes to those minutes? If that is the case, then, um, these will, um, become adopted. All right, move on to reports and recognition, um. We've got a long meeting, so I'm not going to make any, any comments tonight, other than, uh, other than to say that, um, that what happened on the football field is something that I think speaks to who we are as a region, but also speaks to a young man who took some significant leadership. He, he was the reason why we, I think the major reason why we created the program. He was not the only reason, but he was one of the main people. He was one of the main spokespeople for that, and he has showed a level of sportsmanship and a level of commitment to it that is exactly what you would hope is the best that could ever happen. So I want to thank his mom very much. Uh, your son is amazing. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent for his report.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to start with, um, personnel announcements. I'd like to announce and share with the board the appointments of Gabrielle Anello, who's a literacy tutor for one year at Burnham School. Grace Kip, building sub at Booth Free in the Burnham School. Gabrielle Robinson, a literacy tutor at Booth Free. Mackenzie Schaefer, building sub at Chapag Valley School. And a familiar names to some, Dave Werkhoven, uh, building sub at Chapag Valley School. Um, so we're excited to have him on board. We regret to share some resignations and retirements. It's kind of a bittersweet thing. We have to do this, but, um, you know, it's, it's always great to also grow people into new opportunities and things that, um, you know, they're going on to advance their careers and seek new, uh, new challenges for themselves. And so, um, we wish, um, Margaret Angeletti, a literacy tutor at Burnham School, and Theresa Mysakowski, a literacy tutor at Booth Free School, uh, the very best in their new endeavors, um, as they lead the district. And then I'd also like to share one transfer, Michael Pringle. Um, he will be moving from a role as an ed assistant at Washington Primary to the literacy tutor at Washington Primary, uh, for one year. So, uh, we wish him well in this new role as well. I'd also like to share a few other, um, items of interest, I think, for the community and for the board, um. This week or last past week, I was invited to an event, um, at Central Connecticut University where Governor Lamont and the Commission of Education, Charlene Russell Tucker, announced that, um, the state is awarding 3.8 million dollars in grant money, uh, to eighty-nine schools across the state to expand dual credit offerings. And I'm proud to announce that Region 12 is one of the recipients. Uh, I had wrote a grant last year. That grant was approved, so we'll be receiving $10,000 to help, um, in the efforts to expand dual credit here in the region. Um, dual credit is an important idea and an important concept. Many states are already well ahead of, uh, Connecticut in this, but Connecticut is, um, racing to catch up for sure. Uh, and I think this grant is one of the ways. Uh, but what it allows is students to simultaneously complete college courses, uh, where while they're in high school. And through partnerships that you form between high schools and universities, whether that's public or private and colleges. Many students who participate in these programs go on to college as sophomores, which gives them, um, huge financial savings first and foremost, um, also advanced, um, opportunities to, um, get in line for housing before other kids and, um, also signal to schools that they're applying to that they have the, um, the ability to succeed in college as evidenced by the fact they've already done it. So we're really excited about this process. Um, I'm working with our team over at Chapag, uh, to continue to, uh, roll this out. We're also partnering with Advance, um, and we'll be actually meeting this week to continue down that road. So a bit of good news and, um, yeah, I think that was great for the region to be included in that grant. Um, I'd also like to share that we're moving ahead to, um, modernize some of our communication, um, with families. And so we're, we'll be adding a text messaging feature to our voicemail messaging system or email messaging system, uh, that you may be familiar with. So families will be able to opt in to receive text messages related to important district or school-related events. This feature, um, is very popular with families in other districts. And, um, we did send out a message to families that shared how to sign up. And we will send out, uh, follow-up communications. It takes many reps, I think, to kind of get everybody on board here. Um, but those communications will encourage families to, um, be able to painlessly opt in, uh, for that text messaging service. So on snow days and, and those types of things, you don't have to wake up the whole house. You'll just get a text, um, and families tend to kind of like that. Um, I also want to share that tomorrow, um, Region 12 will be honored as a recipient of the Michael's Achievement Cup that awarded by the CIAC, uh, that's a sportsmanship award. Um, that they give out to exemplary athletic programs for sportsmanship, um, hi- having high standards and empowering students to take active roles in their school climate and their continued, uh, support for community service. And so this is a prestigious honor and we're, um, excited to be able to send a host of students and our uh, athletic director and principals down to, uh, receive that award tomorrow on behalf of the district. Uh, I think, you know, as Greg said, um, you know, it's students like Ryan Salem who, um, exemplify that every day for us as well as many others who go out there and play hard on the field, but also remain classy and, um, you know, hold themselves, I think, to a higher level than, um, most high school students. If you've been to the South for me, you've seen this first, firsthand. Um, I also want to share that the Secretary of State, uh, it requires students to, um, or registrars, I'm sorry, in towns to distribute information to high school students to apprise them and educate them about registering to vote. And so the registrars from our three towns have sent letters to our seniors encouraging them to register to vote. And so we're happy to partner with the towns to, um, support them in that work. I think that voting is crucial. And, um, is one of the best ways to be involved in your community. And they also wanted us to remind, uh, the community that civic engagement doesn't stop there. And that students can also volunteer to work at the polls in certain positions beginning at age sixteen. So it's a fantastic way to see, um, up close and personal how the democratic process works. So we hope that some kids will take advantage of that. We've been talking for, it seems like a number of weeks or maybe a month at this point about senior parking lot painting, uh, which again continues to be deferred and delayed because of the fact that it just won't stop raining. Um, but in the meantime, a better plan has emerged. And I had opportunity to talk today with the administration at Chapag and they asked if they could do it during school hours along with a barbecue for the senior class. Um, and I enthusiastically support this, and I think that this is time well spent. Um, we'll go to great lengths to, um, giving seniors a special memory and also, um, bringing that class together and enhancing school spirit. So, um, happy to support that. Another exciting announcement from Chapag. Next Wednesday, Chapag will be partnering with the defamation league to offer an event that's called the Names Can Never Be Heard Us Assembly. The ADLs visited Chapag twice to help train students, staff and volunteers to facilitate conversations with the student body, to help promote unity, understanding and belonging. This program is unique to me because the students, um, play an integral part in playing the assembly, delivering the, the assembly, uh, they serve as speakers, they serve as facilitators. And so, uh, it's not often that you see that level of student engagement and agency in putting together an assembly. Uh, it's usually done to students, not with students. So I think this is pretty unique in that regard. Uh, we even have some of our board members, I know Jen and Greg and others, um, are volunteering to help out that day and they've gone through the training. Um, so looking forward to, uh, to that day. I think it's going to be fantastic. Um, I'll be working as a facilitator and this is work that I'm passionate about, so I can't wait for that assembly. Um. Lastly, um, the school, uh, team of school board members and some of our district administrators visited Oxford School, um, in Darien, that's an elementary school. And the goal of the visit was to visit a, uh, newly constructed school to observe modern school facilities, understand what innovative educational opportunities they offer. Um, and I'll invite people that went on the tour to share. I would say one of the things that really struck me was the, um, significant enhancements in security and safety, um, that I saw that day. I think I learned, um, quite a bit in terms of, um, those regards. Um, that we could take back and implement to make our school safe. And I think that that was, um, at least one important takeaway. There are many others, but that was one that I think really, um, resonated with me. I don't know if there's anyone else who went on the tour that would like to, um, share any observations, um, for the board and for the community of what you saw or heard when you were there that day.
Well, I'm sorry.
I went also, and the, the one thing at the top of my list that that's that's just was excellent. It was outstanding. I can't say enough about it was the safety of those schools. That school, it was, it was unbelievable. And, um, the thing is, is that I want to make sure, I've said this for many, many times, that you've probably all heard it. I want every door to lock every single time. And there, if it doesn't, the SRO goes and goes to the door, sees why it's open. And the person that left it open, I think they get in a little bit of trouble. But the safety, that is the thing that really is in, very important to me. Um, there was a Catholic school outside of Pittsburgh that an active shooter tried to get into and they couldn't get in because all the doors were locked. And they did not gain access to that school. That is what I want us to be. That's all I had to say about that.
Anyone else? I have a few comments, but I was wondering whether everyone else talked first. Uh, I, I think the safety and security issues were, were very important. I think that, that it was, it was an opportunity to see how a newly built school, and I've also seen another newly built school. I've seen the school at Sandy Hook that was, that replaced the old Sandy Hook school they took down after that. Um, and it, it had a lot of similar features. Uh, it, it was, it was a different approach. The, the way these schools are designed, they don't have classrooms near the front door. Uh, you'd have to go far into the school before you encounter a classroom. That's the way they're designed. The, the, every door on the school has what they call a man trap, which is a glassed-in area with bullet-resistant, uh, film on things and other features. Uh, some ballistic glass, uh, and the idea is, is that it is that no one walks into the building. If you're there to drop off your, your child's lunch, you don't come into the building. You leave the lunch, uh, in that area and leave. Uh, it's a whole different approach to security, um, that we, that we don't, um, you know, you don't see in buildings, uh, that are old. You just don't see it because it was never much of a concern, at least was not at all a concern, or there would be something there. And so that I think was very, I think that was very telling to see how they did it, and how they've made the safety and security not be so in your face. That sounds like it's in your face, but it's not. There's a lot of things going on behind the scenes that keep the building safe. And that they're able to do because of the types of facilities that they have, uh, and because of the way they've chosen to staff them. And so these, these are things that I think, uh, I think are, are important. The, the other thing that was a big takeaway and the primary reason I wanted to go to a new school was I wanted to see how they're teaching kids in elementary school. What are they doing differently? What are they doing? What are, how are their? How is it working there? How is their program? When you build a new school, you get an opportunity to let the, you get an opportunity to do something Region 12 has never done. Uh, with, and since we built this middle high school that you're sitting in. We, uh, we never have let the program dictate the facilities. We've always had facilities that dictate the program. And these buildings in Region 12 were designed, the style of school was designed, and, and each of these buildings contains components that are a hundred years old, roughly a hundred years old. Uh, I'd like, I'm very fond of saying, and I'll say it again, Booth Free School has a portion of it that was constructed four years before Abraham Lincoln was elected president. And so these schools were designed and conceived of, some of them hundreds of years ago, more than a hundred years ago. And the question is, what's changed in education? And a lot has changed. A lot's changed in the last ten or fifteen years. And so I wanted to see buildings where the program was dictating the facilities and this, this building is massively different. I saw the same thing when I was at Sandy Hook. Uh, they have a lot more flexible space. They have a lot of opportunities, uh, for having kids uh, engaged in various types of enrichment activities, but also most importantly, uh, they're able to differentiate kids that are going through issues in certain a- a- aspects of the curriculum and they're much, they're much more efficient, very efficiently able to uh, able to do interventions and to, and to get those kids back on track and to, to move them up. So that they end up with a, when, when they leave that school and go to their middle high school, their middle school actually in that town. Um, they're, they're at high levels of breathing and everything else. So they, they have, they have facilities that have been created to do those kinds of things. So that was the primary reason we went there. We didn't go there to look at snappy new modern schools. That's easy. Um, what we went there to look at was how the, the architecture, uh, is, is, is facilitating their program. Because the question we're, the, the issue we're going to have to face tonight is going to be, uh, what do we do with our existing buildings that are in very, very serious need of work? Uh, are we going to renovate them to new? Are we going to just maintain them? Um, or are we going to, to rebuild them? Um, because we need to figure out and before we can make that decision, because it's an expensive road to go down, as you're going to discover tonight. Uh, before we make that decision, we have to know whether our buildings are going to serve our purposes as educational. Uh, before we make a large commitment of resources, we need to know whether our buildings are going to serve the needs, uh, the educational needs of this region going forward for the next forty or fifty years, or whatever the length, whatever the, the, the duration of the, uh, how long the, whatever improvements we make last. Um, a- and so I think it's, I think was, I think it was important to go there. It was important to see these things. It was important to see how they did this because they did this construction while the school was in operation. Uh, and they didn't close the school in order to do the construction. They meant, what they did is they basically built the school in the front yard. And then they moved everyone into the academic portions of the school, tore down the school and then replaced it with the less, the other than academic provision portions of the school, the cafeteria, the, the, uh, the gymnasium, the, the music rooms, the, the library, that kind of thing. So it was a fascinating project to see how it was done because it helped answer questions is can you build with people in place? What are the limitations? What, what other things can you do? Uh, and, uh, and, and it's interesting. And, and Darien was an interesting town to go to. We wanted to go to several other towns, but this is the one that, first one that I think may have accepted our, our invitation, our, our request for an invitation. Um, and they were very generous with their time. The principal spent a half a day with us, so that was pretty, pretty generous. But, uh, Darien has five elementary schools. They're a bit larger than ours, but they have five elementary schools. And they are in the process of either substantially renovating or rebuilding every school in their town. Their schools are similar vintage to ours. Um, and s- some of them are newer and those, the ones that are newer are getting a renovation. This school was very old and it got a complete rebuild. Uh, but there, there, right now, they have projects with the state for about eighty-five million dollars of school construction in Darien for the other schools, plus the money they just spent on this school. This is a commitment of, of probably of, uh, a hundred and fifty or a hundred and eighty million dollars when they're done. Uh, what they're doing with their schools. And, uh, so it was important to go see a district that's doing new things. And I think we learned, I think that what those of us that went were able to learn quite a bit about how the educational program at elementary school is being taught in the twenty-first century, which I think was the reason we went, um, uh. And the other thing, another reason is, is they seem to have done the school that we went to see for a price that is less than other schools that have been constructed recently. So it was important to see how they managed to, uh, how they, what they managed to do for that price. Um, and now should be pleased to know, as, as you saw, it's very Montessori-ish in design. Uh, but in any event, that, that, that was, th- those were my thoughts on, on the trip, uh, down there. So.
Any, any other? Books want to share? Alex, I see you lighting up over there. You're going to share?
I'm just to the next item.
All right, next one. All right. Well, thank you, um, for sharing with the board, um, your observations. I just have one more thing to share. This is hot off the presses, literally breaking, uh, as the meeting is happening. Um, due to the weather, we had to cancel the bonfire and, um, homecoming games and the team has been working to, um, find makeup dates for that. So I'm happy to announce that the bonfire has been rescheduled for Thursday, October 12th. That will start at seven o'clock PM. And then the games will be held on the fifteenth, on that Sunday. Um, and they're hoping to, uh, be able to get some food trucks and festivities and really make it an event. So, um, maybe a silver lining in terms of the weather cancellation and, um, we're hoping to do it big when we actually have the opportunity. So please come out and support, um, Chapag Athletics.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
All right. Pressers report, Alex.
Yes, thank you. Um, well, Nicole, it's been busy. If you, uh, think about it, uh, uh, Saturday was the last day of the quarter. And I have in my hand a quarterly report for the last quarter. Uh, printed out today at, uh, three forty-nine. So, uh, we reviewed this at the F and O meeting just a few minutes ago. Um, we look well in line. Uh, it's a little early to tell. There's certain issues that are still being dealt with. Uh, vacancy and employment here or there. Uh, the only thing that stuck out to me was the cost of propane. Uh, our budget, uh, was way over budget, uh, but considering the cost of propane, uh, the school was able to lock in a good price on propane and, uh, 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 it's not a s- that significant number that's going to throw our budget off. Anyway, uh, anybody that's interested, I've got copies of the, uh, the numbers and they're more than welcome to take a look at them.
Thank you very much. Um, I, I, I think the reason why the propane number is so high though is do we have to pay for all the propane we bought?
We paid it all in once.
Paid it all at once, and that's why it's, it's out of proportion to what the numbers are.
No, no, it's a higher number than for the year, thirty-one percent higher than the budget.
Oh, it's thirty-one percent higher than the budget. That's right. Okay. Yeah, I forgot about that. Okay. All right. Well, that's, that's interesting. All right. I, I'm going to, we'll go on to committee reports, uh, curriculum and educational program, uh, Justin.
Um, nothing new. Our next meeting is, I don't know if it's a typo, five, five thirty PM on the sixteenth. Um, we, there's, we have plenty to talk about, so. It's on the bottom of the, the agenda here. It's usually six, yeah. Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, at Advance, Joe?
Uh, nothing new to report. Our next meeting is this Thursday, October fifth, which is our um, annual budget meeting.
Okay. Um, finance and operations, Alex.
Here I am again. Um, so we just had an F and O meeting at five thirty this afternoon. Uh, uh, I'm not going to go over the financials. We just discussed those. Uh, Don gave us a full report. On the devastation that mother nature has wreaked upon us in the last, uh, week or so. Um. The lightning was a major issue, took out a lot of circuitry. And is slowly being replaced. Um. Probably the total cost of replacing it will be. Uh, under our deductible, which is twenty-five thousand dollars. So it probably. May come close to that, but, uh, probably would not submit a, uh, a, uh. To the insurance agency. Um, the heavy rains have caused problems with the septic systems. Uh, or potential problems. Uh, uh, the leaching fields, uh, some of them, uh, were heavily, uh, uh, covered, saturated. Um, and the other issue we talked about was the septic system here at Chappaq. Um, as you're probably all aware, we had a, a problem with the main line that runs. I guess from the kitchen. Right on down through the front. And, uh, it appears that after putting a camera, snaking a camera down there that at some point. For about twenty-five feet. The line has dropped about four inches, the four inch line. And so it tends to clog up. Um. It's going to be, uh, 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 quite an undertaking to deal with this. It will not be dealing with it till the summer. We're going to. Try and make it through till the summer. Blowing out the system and, and periodically, uh, trying to do small maintenance on it. Um. This summer, we're going to probably have to close the building to anyone under eighteen years old because of potential asbestos. Um, they will be digging up probably twenty-five feet by six feet wide. Um, in, 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 in the, uh, uh, outer hall and, uh. That will be, that will be something to, to, uh, deal with. Um, we then discussed, uh, the, uh, architect's report on, uh, the elementary schools. Um. We weren't happy with the numbers. Uh, much of the report was useful. Size of buildings, dimensions, et cetera. But the numbers seemed, uh, unreasonable. Um, so we are in the process of trying to decide. What the best way of going about getting a cost estimator to estimate the cost of, uh, of, uh, doing this renovation. Or, uh, build new. Um. It would be an expensive proposition to get full set of plans, but that's what a cost estimator needs. Uh, when they reviewed, uh. Uh, our architect's report, they said they just couldn't work off of that. It wasn't, uh, definitive enough. Um, so, uh, we are still looking into. How to proceed with the, uh, three elementary schools. Uh, whether it should be a, uh, renovate to new. Just a maintenance. Uh, the state is going to be coming in with some regulations about air quality, air humidity. Uh, water quality, minerals that aren't allowed in the water. Um, our septic systems in many of the schools, uh, uh, luckily have not broken down like they have here, but, uh. Uh, uh, just an example at, uh, Burnham, uh, we can't use the water saving toilets. Because there's not enough oomph when you flush them to flush the system out. Um, so we're having to stay with the old toilets. Eventually that septic system's going to have to be worked on. So, uh, anyway. That is my report from the F and O meeting.
Thank you very much. Yeah, John.
For Don at this point, about the, uh. Part of the pipe that's.
Right.
Causing all the issues. Has anybody investigated? Did they investigate further down the? The line? Is that clear?
They basically, the, the contractor that came in was limited to three hundred feet. That was the length of his camera. Uh, Don is now looking to find somebody that has a thousand foot run, so we can look the entire scope. Um, and, uh, but, uh. It appears that this, well, there was a, some leak, there was backing up of the system which caused some leakage. That pipe has been replaced. Um, it costs, I can't remember, seventy-five hundred dollars. It's seventy-five hundred dollars. So that's been.
That wasn't the, that was the part that was not buried. Yeah. And, um, it looks from the photographs, it looks like it's. Uh, like a hardened. Substance. Inside that.
In the pipes?
It's like it's constricted like almost like it's calcified or something.
Well, there's a lot of rust and other things in the, in the pipes.
Yeah, so it does have to be replaced.
We're lucky they've lasted this long. Now. Um, before Don was here. Uh, he was telling us that there was a gentleman who we called in for this time. Who had been here many years ago. And had a similar problem where they had to blow the system out. Um, and that may be something we have to do periodically till this summer. Costs eight hundred dollars. Um, so it, it's not a, a overwhelming cost of money, but it. It may be what we have to do on a. Monthly basis or so is just to keep that line open and going till, uh, till June.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. We'll move on to policy committee. We had our first substantive meeting. Um. And we have, uh. Looked at two policies that are on the agenda tonight. Uh, our next meeting is, uh, on November first and, uh, we had sort of, our hope is to get through the entire policy day. Um, at one point or another, and, uh, we, we've asked Mark to bring us. A whole lot of them if they're one liner or two line changes. Uh, and not so many if it's a complete rewrite of the policies. We want to try to get through these, uh. In, in short order. So in any event, that's policy, uh, strategic and long range planning, Jen.
Sorry. Uh, we have a meeting, I think it's November.
Six.
Six. So, um, I'm going to talk with Mark about. What we're going, how we're going to make a more regular meeting on that. Cause I know that there supposedly isn't anything. Hot topics to talk about, but I kind of disagree. So we're going to figure it out.
Okay. Um, all right. Old business, we have nothing. So we'll move on to new business and updates. Um, the first item under new business is, uh, first reading, policy forty-two eighteen point eleven on non-discrimination. This policy has been. Here it is. But no, yeah, here it is. This policy has been substantially rewritten. Uh, these are primarily due to some changes in the law. And the policy. Committee, um. Is recommending that we adopt it for a first reading. Uh, this is, this is. Again, updating our policies, uh, for changes in the law. And, uh, that's primarily what's, what's happened here. Um, some terminology that's different and, uh. Better definition of some of the, the, the. Definitions in there, things like what that domestic violence means and some of the other items that are. That are in here and also they have given updated reporting, but the places people can report these things. Uh, so that's pretty much it. I don't know if anyone has any questions. Um. Yeah. Do I have a motion to accept this for a first, uh, reading? Is there a second? Moving to second, uh, further discussion? John?
So. I believe it was two years ago. Twenty twenty-one, so it's. Yeah, quite, quite some time ago. We hired Shipman. To manage our policies and bylaws. I'm not certain, what is their part? In, um, the whole. Looking at the whole, what is their, what is Shipman's part at this point? And how much are we paying them this year?
Well, I, I'm going to defer to, to, um, Nicole to tell you how much we're paying them, but what Shipman does. Is they constantly, they have people in their office that constantly review the policies in their policy day. They look for changes in the law and when the law changes, they update the policy. If they have a new idea about how a policy ought to go, they update it, but. It's more often changes in the federal or state law. Governing education that causes them to change policies. And when they do it, they update.
Why is there so much emphasis for us as a board to edit these policies then?
We're not editing them. We're going over them and looking at them. We're looking for things in the policies that are. This policy doesn't happen to have any of those things, but we're looking for things that might be very particular to us. And to make sure that the policies we have reflect the way we do things. If there are, if there are things we can do that are different than what the policy says. In this one, there isn't. There's nothing we could do differently than this. It's all a matter of state law. So I think that, that really is the reason why we have a policy committee to go through. Sometimes we need to make tweaks to the policies. Um, for example. The bylaws. You're familiar with one that's going to be on our next agenda. For tweaking. Nicole?
Uh, John, with respect to your question about what we pay annually, we don't. We paid a one-time upfront fee of ten thousand dollars. And they gave us their boilerplate policies. And we could have paid them more on an hourly basis to do the work that the policy committee is now doing to go through one by one. To modify them the way we want them modified, but we opted not to do that. So now that we have. We paid them to have their boilerplate policies. They now send us, we're on their update email. So every time the law changes, they send us an update as to what has changed and how we should amend the, our policies. To comply with law, which is what the policy committee will do. As those changes are made. And I believe that sometime in the future, I think cyclically. Shipman will rebuild for a new boilerplate set of policies if they deem it's time to put out a whole new set. Um, but. We haven't paid anything since that initial payment a few years back.
Okay. Any other comments or questions about? Proposed policy forty-two eighteen eleven, amended proposed policy forty-two eighteen eleven. All right. Uh, all those in, in favor of the motion to accept for a first reading, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? I see none opposed, all those abstaining. I see none abstaining, so it is an eleven to. Zero, zero wrote. And this will come back. In the future for a second reading. All right. The next policy we have is, uh, forty-two eighteen point one one three. This policy has very little in the way of change to it, um. Trying to find the mark version of it. Well, I ca- I, I printed it, but it came in black and white, so I can't find that one line that changed.
Discrimination or harassment on the basis of sex. Including discrimination, harassment on the basis of gender identity or sexual orientation. The only other change. Is. It added, uh, the, the words to any board employee or. And they changed their phone number.
Yeah, there wasn't much about this policy that was different. I think that was really to pick up new protected classes under the law into the policy. And that, and that's what was done there. So do I have a motion to accept, uh, policy forty-two eighteen one one three as amended for a first reading? Is there a second? Moving to second, is there a further discussion or questions? Okay, I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. All those abstaining, please so indicate. That's eleven to nothing. That was adopted for first reading. Okay, I would like to. In the interest of efficiency. Take the one last thing on our agenda after this next item under new business, which is the, the. The Reardon Mangiani Associates. The Johnny Associates Architects Report. Before we do that, can we do the action item of establishing graduation, just so we don't forget to do it? Is, is there anyone object to moving that up on the agenda so we could do it? It'll take two seconds. Okay, um, it, it, it's been proposed that we establish June eight, twenty twenty-three as the graduation date for the Chappaq. Wait a minute. I think that's June eight, twenty twenty-four. As the graduation date for the Chappaq class of twenty twenty-four. Um. So, uh, is there, uh, is there a motion to establish June eight, twenty twenty-four as the graduation date for Chappaq class of twenty twenty-four? Is there a second? Okay, uh, is there any discussion on it? Uh, you, you know that for those of you that are, that have not been on the board that long, when we establish a graduation date now. There could be a lot of snow days, but the graduation date doesn't change. That's the graduation date. Of course. If the last day of school extends beyond that. The seniors are of course invited to come back after graduation and attend school for the remainder of the year. When any of them don't do that, we'll let you know. But, uh. But technically they should come back and finish the year, but, uh, I, I, you've already handed them a diploma. I don't know what you're going to do. Uh, can't keep them down on the farm as they say. So, yeah, um. That, that's the purpose of doing it. So we can have people plan in advance and we don't have a massive, there are a bunch of snow days before they graduate. Okay. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All those abstaining? The class of twenty twenty-four and their parents, thank you. Okay, now we will move on to under new business, item three. Uh, present to the board, the region twelve schools facility review performed by a Reardon Mugani Associate Architects LLC. All right. For those of you that have forgotten when this, and I wouldn't blame you if you forgot when this process started. This was back when Megan Bennett was here. Uh, that she had Don put out, we, we had, we had, had her suggestion, we had Don put out an RFP. Uh, to ask for an architect, uh, to, um. To make some estimations. We wanted to know what would be, if they could help us identify what needed to be done and what the cost for those items were. In order to, um. Maintain our elementary schools. Um, and also to renovate our elementary schools to new. Um. And that, that's what, that's what went out and we, we, we had one architect, I think, bid on it, this architect that we see the reports from. They were the only one that, that, that indicated that they were willing to do it. We hired them to do it and then we proceeded to wait a long time. Um. We, we pressed a lot, but I, I think it was a very challenging project for them. And, um, uh, we did not get the report until the end of March. That dra- the first draft report, the one that's, the one that's. With the paper vertical is the, is the draft, the one with the. With the paper and landscape. Is the, is the, the, the second report. Well, I wouldn't, I don't know if I'd call it final. It's the next report that we got. Um, so we, we looked, we looked at this during the month of April. Um, it came in at the very end of March, we looked at this during the month of April, uh, uh, this year. And we talked about it in-house. I know Don O'Leary and I and Mark and Nicole. Uh, talked about this report because we were scratching our head, we couldn't figure out what this report was telling us. In this report, the numbers are different than this sheet that, that was given you, which are in the newer report. Um, but they, they came up with a number to maintain. Um, all three schools at thirty-two million eight and a number to, um. Reconstruct all three schools, but by reconstruct, they meant renovate to new of fifty million and ninety-nine thousand dollars, so fifty million one. Uh, is in essence what they came up with here. And then they added also to maintain. Uh, or to renovate to new the offices of the, of the school, of eleven A School Street there, in the old Washington High School building. Uh, and so that brings the numbers up to fifty-eight million, uh, four thirty-two to, to maintain. And to renovate to new seventy-one million two fifty. Well, actually, I take that back. That's not right. I, I think to renovate to new, including the BOE offices is fifty-eight million. That, that's what that number was. And then maintaining everything, including the offices, was thirty-eight million. So those were the original numbers we get, and they also threw in this number. Comparison, consolidate into one new seventy-five thousand square foot new elementary school with interval B of E offices. At nine fifty a square foot. We didn't ask them to do that. In fact, we told them we had no interest in that. And in, if you read the report, in the report, he says. There is a third option after he discusses the option, and that's this consolidation option, but it's beyond the scope of this report and we have not done that work. And then he proceeds to stick a number in here for it. A, a number that probably grossly overstates the cost. Uh, but the bottom line is, is that, um, we looked at these numbers and we looked at some of the numbers for the individual schools. And just so you get one idea, one number that stood out for us. Uh, the cost at Washington Primary of removing the ceilings, which are presumed to contain hazardous materials. He gave us a number of nine hundred thousand dollars for twenty-seven thousand square feet of ceilings. That's twenty-five dollars a square foot. In the ag science building project. We had to remediate a single four-foot by eight-foot bulletin board. That had asbestos mastic used to stick it to the wall. That was four thousand dollars just to do a four-by-eight bulletin board. So we couldn't imagine how if that was a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Even if you have efficiencies of scale, when you do a whole building, you don't have to tend it, but you have to do other things. Uh, in order to make it safe, you have to evacuate it, get everyone out. It didn't make any sense that it was a five, a factor of five difference. So we asked him about that. We asked him about a bunch of other numbers in here. We raised questions about this report. We had a meeting. We also told him, why did you put this consolidation of, we, we weren't going there. We told you we were not going there. We didn't want to do that. And why did you put a number in there? So we said, look, can you clean up the report? Get that out of it. Let's have just what we've got and we'd like you to take a look at these numbers and see if you think, because we thought these numbers grossly understated the value of renovating new. So he comes back with the second report and in the second report, he reduces all the numbers. And he no longer talks about the concept of, of consolidated schools and dropped that as an alternative. Which is what we asked him to do. We can't figure out this report because it does, there's, we, we can't figure out precisely why this is. And we began to wonder if maybe it's just. It's very difficult to come up with these numbers, looking at industry standards versus local prices and. Uh, so we decided that the, the FNO committee decided that perhaps we needed an estimate, professional estimator to estimate these numbers. Someone who's familiar with local working conditions and local prices and costs. So we could get numbers that we felt were, we could have some confidence in. Uh, because we didn't really want to go down the road to a very expensive project. Only to find out that we were under, undervalued it and, and it's going to cost us more than we thought. So we really think we have to look at this. Uh, because what's been presented to us by our Director of Facilities. Is that we have three elementary schools that are well beyond their useful life. These buildings are real old. And things and components are starting to fail. We've got the problem with the septic line here in, in Shapog. This is a building that is fifty-two years old. Okay, Washington Primary School. Is got a similar septic problem. It's different than ours, but it's, but it's also got a septic system that runs under the building. And that septic system is at the end of its useful, that septic, septic pipe is at the end of its useful life. And that's going to require a substantial construction. Um, and so all of our buildings contain elements like that. They're extremely expensive to maintain. They're beyond their useful life. They have, each building has significant challenges to the education of the kids in it. And so we, we decided we needed to make an investment. If we were going to keep three schools in our three towns, we needed to invest in them. We could no longer just get by with bailing wire and string, uh, holding these things together. Uh, they, they needed a significant investment of resources. Uh, and so we, we got these estimates, uh, but since then. Uh, a, a big question has been, has been raised, which is. Can we even contemplate renovating to new after what we've seen in terms of the way education is delivered in elementary school today? Uh, because our buildings, if you renovate them to new, you're not going to get a brand new school, what you're going to get is a hundred-year-old design. That's like we're back a hundred years ago. Okay? You're going to get the exact same design, the same rooms, the same facilities, nothing added, nothing different. All the same. And the question is, do you really want to invest either fifty-eight million or? Thirty-five million or, and take it back, either fifty million or thirty-five million or some other num, some other large number. To end up with a, a modern version of an antique design. So the question is, would you be better off, uh, we should be better off constructing new buildings? Um, because the cost may not be that different, uh, the renovation and new cost. So. What we've brought to you tonight are these reports because they've been issued and they've been sitting around longer than we anticipated and sitting around because we can't figure them out. Uh, and, and the FNO committee has been, has spent a good bit of time on it. And has decided that these reports, we got a lot of good information about our schools, we've got a lot of good information about the buildings. Um, uh, we're, these, one of these reports might be right, or both of them might be right in different ways. We don't know, but, um, we, we felt that this was a, a significant expenditure was going to be necessary and therefore we needed to get more information. And we needed to get concrete numbers. As to what we've got to do in order to move forward until our three towns can have their elementary school functioning in a way that. That is, is worthy of the twenty-first century education. And that's what we were trying to do here. And, and somehow it got off in the direction of some people thinking that this was a consolidation effort. It's not. It was exactly the opposite. It was how do we maintain our existing schools? Can we maintain our existing schools? Or do we really need to rebuild them, uh, or, or, or renovate them to new or some other substantial construction projects? So that was the purpose. We got a lot of good information. We got plans on our existing schools. Uh, we got a lot of good information here from the architects on things that need to be addressed. We just don't have a high degree of confidence in the numbers for no other reason than. These seem to be based on some national or, or recognized figures as opposed to local on-the-ground issues that maybe an estimator. Can get us a better value on. And Alex brought up a good, a, a good point, which is when he was chaired the Building Committee in Montessori. Uh, they, they got, um, uh, information, uh, from their architect initially, initial information, and they put it out for an estimator when they got the plans. Which is what you do. That's what we did here with the Shapog Agroscience Program. You put it out for an estimator. And, uh, then you get numbers that are typically higher. Uh, again, because they, they've actually estimated the real construction drawings, where the architect doesn't really have. They've got the existing drawings. And I think that really was what the problem was. They don't have a set of construction drawings to estimate from, and I think that's mission impossible. I think we were maybe asking for something that couldn't be done. But, um. But that's the way you do it. You, you, you have design development, you take it to the state, you get them to approve it. You move on and eventually you get a pair, a set of construction drawings. These are the drawings that are going to guide the builder. On how to build it. And those are the ones that the estimator estimates the cost of. And that's the typical way it works. There's a reason why we didn't go right to that. You're going to say, well, why didn't you just start there? Because to get a set of construction drawings for a school. Construction project is probably somewhere between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars. So three schools, six hundred thousand dollars, three hundred to six hundred thousand dollars, not what we wanted to do. So, um, what we've talked about doing is, is, is doing estimation for one school and then. Applying that to the other buildings based on square footage differences, facilities differences and the like. Uh, as, as, as an approach or a way that we might get some good numbers. But I think, uh, at this point in time, I don't know how you want to, you want to take it, Mark. I don't know if you want to, if Don discussed or you want to discuss. Um, the, the issues with the existing schools and, and what our concerns are and why we headed off in this direction or what. I wanted to just give the history of it, of how we got, how we got where we are.
Yeah, and I think it also needs to be simplified. I think that what's really important for everyone to understand, um, is what this report. Was and what it's not, right? So this report was commissioned. To do exactly what it's titled, to give us a facility review of the schools, to tell us what's wrong with the schools, what needs to be repaired and replaced. Uh, to bring them up to code, to make them, um, efficient, to make them safe, uh, to make sure that it's not toxic, um. Compounds or elements in the schools like asbestos or lead or mold, these types of things. Um, lead solder, um, copper and, and the water supplies. Uh, and so that's what this report was intended to do, is to really take a detailed look and say. Here's all the things that are wrong. Here's all the bumps and warts. This is what we need to fix in order to bring our schools up to snuff. And then, um. It gets a little convoluted, I think, when we start putting prices to these things, because I think that's where the report starts to overstretch. When it starts talking about, well, here's a couple of options, maintain, renovate to new, um. And so that's where I think that, you know, it's probably more important to find out and look at this and say. What's the condition of our schools? What do we need to do moving forward? Um, I know that speaking for the administration, we would love some direction as to. You know, when we start to formulate budgets, where do we want to put our money? Does it make money, does it make sense to put money into schools if we know that, um. You know, there's significant needs and that maybe we need significant, you know, investments in the schools, whether that's to. Renovate them to new or rebuild them altogether. Uh, but that's something that, you know, we're looking, um, to gain a little bit of insight into. But, you know, I think the, the report does a good job of laying out the current state of the schools, and I think that's consistent across both versions here. Um, you know, the numbers, I think we can probably say, um. Don't mean much until you have a set of plans, you know, and that you can actually work from it with. A realistic idea of what you want to do and what you want to build or what you want to, um, go about fixing. So, um, you know, that's. What it is. And I, I think we just have to kind of exercise some restraint and not over, um. Interpreting what the report is delivering, what it was intended to deliver. And that's probably where maybe we pushed a little too hard. And asking them to do too much all at the same time in that report. Um, but that, that's the long and short of it. And I'd invite Don to maybe, um, speak to. Some of the, um, the findings in the report, um, and also maybe even a. A realistic boots-in-the-ground idea about what it's like working in our schools and where the areas are, um, that need some, some addressing. What's critical, uh, what are some of the long-range things? I think the things that stick out to me in this report are the findings around safety and security. And the fact that it says that in the next three to five years, we're looking to, um, be faced with some significant. Uh, costs and significant projects that we would need to undertake in order to, um. Have schools that we want our kids in. And so those are the, the things that really struck me, um, across both these reports, that three-to-five-year thing really sticks out to me. Um, Don, what else do we need to know from this report?
So from, hello? So from, um, the point of view from facilities. Well, what we're finding is that the last renovations of the elementary schools were done in nineteen eighty-eight. What we're finding now is that those, those renovations are starting to fail. The circulated pumps, the. The boosters, the. Waste systems. Water systems. In addition to the mechanical things failing. We're lacking mechanical issues. We're, we're lacking air conditioning, we're lacking. Fresh air. We're lacking the ability to control it anytime we want. One of the other issues we're starting to find is that on the radar for DPH, EPA. Are copper and lead and various other chemicals in the water. Each of these schools were built in a time when the water supplies are copper and lead. It's only a matter of time before we fail a lead inspection. Not through any fault of our own, but because of the makeup of the system. At that point in time, it'll be very difficult to keep the state off our back. And not put in a very expensive system to treat it. One of the problems we're having in addition to the mechanics. The lead. Et cetera, the lack of air is the hazards in the buildings. So most of the buildings have covered up the asbestos tile floors with carpeting. That carpeting is twenty-five plus years old. In order to change the carpeting in those buildings. A lot of that tile will come up with that, that carpet in its demo, which would require an abatement project. What we found out this year was that trying to paint the, the facilities. The EPA has a rule out there for, for, um. Repairs, renovations and painting. That basically states that if there's lead present, which each of these schools has lead present under the. Surfaces of most of the coverings that presently are painted on them. Um, we cannot sand, scrape or disturb more than six square feet in any one classroom. No than, no more than twenty square feet in any exterior building. So what we typically do is just clean and repaint the surfaces over and over. And if you've seen them, they're starting to get very thick with paint because we can't deal with what's underneath it. Some of the classrooms have features that are wooden nature. The wooden cabinets, the wooden storage, the wooden trays that are built in. And at one time were nice features, but are no longer used in that manner. However, to try to bring them up in appearance. Would be very costly. And, and so far I've attempted to, to, I, I've resisted to paint over them. Because once I start painting over the surfaces of cabinets and drawers and. And racks and things like that, we're going to have to paint them every year because they nick and there's cracks. So. You know. That, that, that's basically what I'm seeing. The, the, the waistlines. The, the WPS waistline is exposed underneath its building. It runs for about a hundred and fifty feet. It has a crack along the top of it. The good thing is. There's not as much waste in there where it leaks out the top of that, but it's only a matter of time. Um, the recent rains, like I was describing to Alex. Um, have put us in a position in that particular school. Where the grounds, it's surrounded by, by a river. It's in a flood plain. The grounds have swollen with water to the point where. That water level can be seen inside the school by looking at any one of the drains in the, in the downstairs area. It's within six inches of the floor in the school. It won't get any higher because it's as high as it's going to get outside. But that's not good for draining the waste in our septic systems. So basically, at this point in time, what you see in this report for deferred maintenance are mostly the things that we can't work on. We can't get to the profits. We can't, the, the ceilings, in order to put LED lights in the ceilings. Many of the, the old asbestos ceilings with asbestos mastic have been hidden with drop ceilings. And so these drop ceilings have, have. You know, have hazards when you work above them that we really don't want to disturb. You know, a lot of the, the lighting, if you've noticed in the elementary schools, is pendant style lighting, not necessarily drop-in light. And all of the pendants are buried into the asbestos ceiling and can't be removed without an abatement. So it's, it's kind of frustrating. So it's it's kind of frustrating. You you know, I want to to take them and make them much better and. Problem is, we can't. The 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 hazards are in the way, the 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 EPA, the DPH, the state. Many of many of these these people are obstacles to us getting it done because we've covered up things in the past that need to be removed.
Don, I know the other day we had traffic accident. We almost had the Smith booth early. Uh, because they lost power. And when we lose power in our schools. We rely on pumping systems to get clean water into schools and then pumping systems to get wastewater out of schools. And when we lose electricity, we can't operate that. So we are forced to close schools at present um situation. So. I reached out and I said, well, hey, don't we have a generator? And the answer was no. Um. What kind of challenges will we face with installing something like generators at the elementary schools?
In that particular school. Mr. Cobbit talks about it being built four years before Lincoln was shot. Um. Ever source has been in there, contractors have been in there, solar people have been in there. And we all marvel at the electric panel in the basement of that school. It's believed by those three groups of people that that electric panel. Maybe one of the first that was available in the early nineteen twenties. If if that panel failed tomorrow, I wouldn't be able to operate the school. I I don't think I would be able to to find a suitable component to make a repair. I may have to. Cut it out and replace it with something on a truck or make a make a portable. But your question was was, you know, directly related to the generator. Before we put a generator in there, we need to have a panel that would support it, a transfer switch, et cetera. The the generator itself does provide some um obstacles. In terms of that particular school being on a small footprint, it's noise, it's fuel, access, et cetera. That part probably can be done if if we gave it a lot of thought and and specific consideration to those.
We'd have to invest in the electric system first.
But first you you'd need something to tie it into.
One of the things that concern in the report too, Don, is the fact that there's no um. Fire protection that's offered through sprinklers at the schools, right? And so um. That's generally considered a best practice today for fire suppression. So. Without having um. Pumps at work when the electricity were were to fail, e- even if we had a sprinkler system, would it still work? Like, how do they.
Not without a generator, not without a generator. It it wouldn't work without it. It would need power to 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 operate a sprinkler system.
Wouldn't you also need a significant storage space? Because I don't think booth free school, my last last time I checked the well drilling log, it does not have a very good yield, the well. No, our. It's half a gallon a minute.
That is true. Um, our wells do not recover all that quickly. Um, they benefit from the lack of students in the school. Um, the state requires duplicity. They require two. If you were to build a school today, it required two wells to be one. Each of which would be fully self-supporting in the school.
So, Don, we have the report, right? But I'm curious, you know, from your vantage point. For each of those elementary buildings, if I said, Don, I'm going to give you a million dollars free and clear. Go and fix the highest pressing needs in each of those buildings. What do you think would be the things that would be on your front burner in terms of, we'd want to use that money?
That that. That that's a difficult question because there's there's a number of systems that need to be dealt with. Um. I I typically look to make things watertight and then start working my way into the to the needs of the. The the body, the the waste systems, the water systems, things like that. Um. They they all, they're all different, to be honest. Um.
What would you say the chief priorities at each building? If you were to say, tick off each elementary building, said, you know, this is the thing we need to do right now. Um, what would be the the top line item for you?
Reason it's difficult to answer is because they function.
Yep.
They're all functioning, you know, in in their own way. They're all working. They they haven't failed, so to speak, but these 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 problems are all looming in the back to keep us from moving anywhere. Um. You know, over in WPS, I think that that you'd have to fix that that cast iron water line underneath the building.
Oh, okay, yeah, but not, yeah.
Um, it could cause.
Septic line, you did, not not water.
Problem if it if it did, you know, fail underneath the building because now there's lawsuits. Over in the Burnham facility, there's the the flat roofs that were put in in two thousand and nine. Need to be redone again. The the workmanship wasn't to very good satisfaction. And they are creating some leaks. So I'm working right now with the um warranties. So we're trying to before winter, get them sealed up. Um, with the possibility of putting something on the budget for next. To replace or do something like we did up here to not replace them, but to to restore their top caps. And give them another twenty minutes. Um, over in the green preschool, right now, the well system, which is only one well. It's way down in the in the right hand corner of the soccer field, and it's very close to a reference. We had the money in this budget this year to put a new well pump in that well. And we haven't been able to get a truck down there all through the summer to be able to pull that well and change it. Our plan right now is to wait till it freezes. So then we can get a truck down there to to pull it out.
Don, one of the things that. I worry about, you know, is this idea about the the canary in the coal mine, right? And so I I see. You have this waistline here at Chapag, which is the newest building, right? Um, and. Going to be significant cost and significant undertaking to dig up the mall and replace this um water line, uh wastewater line. Um. Am I right? And where are there going to be similar issues like that at these other schools? Uh, am I? Thinking, oh, but maybe that's not really a thing and that this is just a unique anomaly to this building. Um. Are these concerns valid or?
Well, anytime you put a waistline or any water line or any line underneath structure. At some point you're going to have to deal with it. And um the answer to your question is yes. The problem with it is we're. It has not reared its ugly head in the way that this one has. If we want to talk, somebody mentioned Burnham and and the waistline over there. Well, that has a unique issue with its waste because the building. Sits so high on the property. There there's very little, if no pitch at all, under. Or on the waistlines to get them outside of the building.
We know what that does.
They're within six inches of the pavement in the rear. And in the winter. When we plow and we expose it to the cold, and then we end up with a ten degree or single degree digits for a couple of days. I literally have the historians for RV antifreeze down the toilet lines to keep them. Um. I have replaced one of the lines going out out of me because it was cracked. The other that is close to the surface. We haven't replaced it because it's it's more than we can do. So in other words, we can replace it, but it still has no pitch and no size and no pressure behind it. It's just going to trickle. You know, there's there's not enough. What needs to be done is the system.
And and I know that they did, you know, the facilities review and they took a look at those things. I just wanted to kind of get a. A realistic kind of boots on the ground idea of the things that you face, what are the headaches and the pain points that you experience and trying to to work on and maintain these buildings and. Again, where, from someone looking at this and working with it every day, you know, we need to think about spending money in the near term. Um, you know, so again, thanks for answering.
I did get an opportunity to speak to the architect. The these are the things we spoke about. So in that report, the reason you see that the water lines being replaced and the septic lines being replaced, this this is the, these are the reasons. You know, that abatement projects that are on there, those are the reasons. You know, if if we didn't have asbestos tiles and asbestos ceilings, I could I could have replaced the LED light. I could have put LED lighting in there a long time ago. I could have made, replaced the carpets or asked for for those to be done a long time ago. But but we can't do that. And and it is, it is frustrating, to be really honest with you, in my position, because. You know, I do ask for some, and and I have to be honest, and this has been a very generous district. There's no, I'm not making complaints about that. But, you know, I I do ask for various things that um. Help or try to help, like Curtis says, make the buildings work with what they have. But I'm I'm pretty much getting close to to the edge of the the cliff at the moment. And and I can't deliver as much as as I should or that you deserve. Um, with with some of these obstacles. So it gets a little frustrating for me because. I believe these are my buildings, just like they're my houses, and I try to care for it that way. And and when when something, you know, I have to make a a decision in my budget to remove this and keep this, and then. That fails. And everyone's like, well, why did you do that? You know, it kind of hits you a little like, you know, yeah, you know, I I wish I could have, you know. So. It's about all I can say about that.
Like, I know there's other questions for Mr. Larry, but I just wanted to. Ask him to at least give us a kind of insider's perspective of what he sees and faces each day beyond what is reported in the facility review.
I don't think that anybody who speaks. Town or anybody that wants to review or anybody in the board disputes that we we absolutely have to do something to either repair. Um, or renovate our schools, but. For, you know, Greg, for you to say, gee, we don't have a whole lot of confidence in these numbers, so we we have to get better numbers. I appreciate that, but then this paper is useless.
No, it's it's not useless because.
It's not useless with respect to what needs to be done. But what I would like to see, first of all, the you look at region twelve, we still have the review, they have the wrong addresses. Um, what I would like to see is, you know, even as a homeowner, you know, Don's right, you treat it like your house. If I were a homeowner and I just bought a house or I wanted to renovate my house, what I would want is to buy that Alex says. To come in and say, okay, let's take booth. Here's your immediate. Here's your five year plan. Here's your ten year plan. Here's what has to be done. Here's the cost, a realistic cost, you know, between this amount and this amount. And I think that would be. Much more informative for all of us. And, you know, I don't think anybody, it, you know, whether you're a homeowner or a school district or a building, anybody's in a position probably ever. To be able to, you know, things are going to break. They break. They wear out, they break. You could buy a brand new car, the warranty ends, there goes the transmission. Um. Stuff happens. So that's what I would like to see is just something that's sort of more streamlined to be able to say. You know, now we can look at it intelligently and discuss it and and make it safe.
Well, you know, we've we've had capital plans on our buildings before. They're not always that helpful. The problem we've run run into is is that we're at the point now where those those five year plans are to be spending an enormous amount of money. In order to deal with it. And so the question is, do, you know. How best to deal with it? And you can't, I I mean, I, you know, we're we're past the five year plan thing. We've now got buildings that are at, you know, they have multiple. Systems and multiple things that are on the brink, we believe, of failure. And this is going to be a situation in which, you know, enough things, if enough things go bad in any one building, you have to close it. And we don't own these buildings. I might point that out. The towns own these buildings. We don't own them. And and before we put, before we put a significant amount of money into them, we need to understand what's wrong with them. And this report does tell us what's wrong with them. I don't, and and they also gave us plans. And and they did a lot of work. They gave, I just don't think that, I don't think it's possible to come up with these numbers without. Having a set of construction drawings. You you really need a final construction plan drawing in order to come up with numbers that you can have confidence in. Because even with that level of work, when we did the construction project here at Chapag. It still ended up costing a little bit more than even the final estimate, even the the estimates were because, you know, stuff happens. Things change. You find a circumstance you didn't anticipate. And so the the costs are always higher than those, but their construction numbers were pretty close. Uh, they were pretty tight on where the actual numbers came out. And but you can't do that without. Construction drawings, and that costs money to do. And we didn't go that route. We went the route of trying to see if an architect could help us. And unfortunately, there are a lot of numbers in here, and we didn't want you to think. These numbers are accurate or these are right. These are done without a set of plans. So the question is, how much confidence can you have in it? Not because they're not prepared properly. Or because the the architect didn't do the good job. No, of course they did a good job. That that's not the issue. The issue is. Wh- where do we have to go to figure out how much is this going to cost so we can plan it?
That was my point. I mean, I'm not disputing what you're saying, but when you say, you know, and that would be what I would like to see, if that's possibility. I realize it it sounds kind of simplistic, but you know, Don says. Okay, first thing that probably at booth has to be replaced is that electrical panel. Okay, then that's number one on that list for renovation. Then if you look through this facility review, there might be nine years left on that roof. Okay, so maybe that's not the nine year plan, but maybe that's the five year out. Like, maybe the roof is still okay. And I get that, you know, well, we had a, you know, once we got into the electrical system, guess what? We had to rip the roof up. I guess I get that that happened. But I I would. I would like to see sort of if it's possible from, you know, this construction, whatever it is. Get sort of a more streamlined. Sort of these are immediate. This can, you know. It's all, it it all has to be done, but this is immediate. This is.
It's all immediate, Angela. It's all immediate because we're now at the point where we have, we're 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 likely to be facing the need to replumb our buildings. Because you can't, you cannot eliminate. You cannot eliminate copper and lead from the water unless you have something other than copper and lead pipes. Yeah, you can, you can run a filtration system, but that necessarily isn't going to get you where you want to be. Uh, and 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 that's a very expensive prospect to filter all the water that has to go through a school. So it it it, you know, it looks like there's a lot of replumbing in the works. The the heating systems do not provide ventilation. Ventilation is necessary. We know that, and and the buildings themselves don't have the spaces we need to teach. I mean, we are conducting classes in in at least one of our schools in closets. We are sending a teacher and a student into a closet because we have no room for them. What the hell is this? This is the. These three are the three wealthiest communities in Litchfield County, and we need to use closets for education? Come on, guys. We have tried to milk these buildings along. They're all a hundred years old or have components that are a hundred years or more. The time has come that we need a comprehensive solution, not picking off this project this year, this project next year, this project the year after next. You need a more comprehensive solution. You're going to spend more money that way. You're going to spend far more money picking off individual projects. Than you are doing a comprehensive solution to the building, whether that's renovate to new or new buildings. I don't know which. It's one of the two, but the maintenance prospect is almost as expensive as the renovate to new. Exactly. And that's what we have to get. We have a way to do it. John?
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying. Until you get some real numbers. You know, we have to face the fact that and during public comment. We have to see what the communities are willing to support. Are they willing to support fifty million dollars? And and that's in May's, that's May twenty twenty three. What happens five years from now? What is inflation going to bring us? So. It.
Higher.
Spend six hundred, even to spend six hundred thousand right now and get an idea, a ballpark idea of what this, these three scenarios are going to cost. Isn't going to be the actual cost five years from now. So I I don't know. It's a, it it is a problem, but I think we have to start with what the communities are willing to. To um to put up with.
Well, look, I think, I think that obviously, the the one thing you have to remember, and this is, this is, this is how these things get sort of blown. Well, look, I think, I think that obviously, the, the, the one thing you have to remember, and this is, this is, this is how these things get sort of blown out of. People get panicky about the numbers. You're not writing a check, no one's writing a check for whatever the number is, thirty million, thirty-five million, fifty million, whatever it is. What you're writing is you're writing the check for the interest and the repayment of the principal on the bonds. And, and it's, it's, it's a lot less, it's a manageable thing, these could be. Twenty, thirty, forty, even fifty-year bonds. Uh, I think we, we want to use the one that's got the best cost ra- ratio return. But, uh, you know, for a project like that, the, 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 the question is. What are we going to need to invest in our schools? And recognize that the number is going to get bigger every year before you break ground. Uh, the costs are going to go up, uh, you know, we saw that with the Chapag project. We had a significant increase in cost because it took the state over a year to finance, a year and a half to finance it. And in that period of time, our costs went up. And it went up about five million dollars on the project and we had to value engineer that out and we did a, a pretty good job. We actually finished that project under budget. Over time, we were late, but we were under budget. And we did that through some really careful working and some good fortune. Over the course, over the course of that project, we were able to do that, but, but the bottom line is. We need some good numbers, the way to do it is to get a set of construction drawings. Um, there's a decision that needs to be made on that before we can order those construction drawings. But it's been suggested to us, I think Nicole, you suggested that we do one school, not three. Uh, let's do our, let's do primary, it's our largest school and therefore it's going to be. You, you don't want to find out that you underestimated for the largest school because we do have, it is the largest school, so we buy a lot. So, um, we should probably estimate, we should probably get drawings for that. And then we can have a professional estimator estimate it, and then we can scale back to the other schools by looking at the square footage differences. By looking at the features that are in the estimate. For example, uh, Burnham doesn't have an elevator, so any cost related to elevator in Washington primary, we can eliminate from the Burnham thing. But we can, we can get pretty good numbers on the other two schools. Um, uh, I think from the get-go here, um, i- if we estimate one school. Uh, so, so probably that's the direction we, we might want to go in. Uh, so that we can get some real numbers on this, but I, I think the idea of piecemealing this just isn't going to work. Because what ends up happening is, is you end up tearing up things in order to fix, to fix this feature, you have to tear up three other things. Which you would have torn down to, to redo the building anyway. So what you're doing is then when you come back to do that, that project, now you're tearing it up again, which you tore up two years ago. So what you end up doing is you, you end up turning a, a, a fifty-million-dollar project to a hundred-million-dollar project. Over time, because you keep, you keep stepping in the same ground, it's like a. It, it's like the old, the, the old line about a pie crust, it's better if you don't touch it more than once. Uh, the, the warmer it gets, the worse it gets, so you know, you, you, it's the same way here, you don't want to keep replowing the same ground. Which you're going to have to do, and the other thing Don will tell you about these elementary schools is. You can't go into a wall, some walls are really thick and it's filled with hazardous material. Every time you touch something, it's a massive amount of money. Uh, for tenting it, you got to do it when the school is closed. Uh, it limits us to summers, which means if we're doing these kind of big projects, it's going to take years to do a big project. Because you can only use it, do it in the summer, when, when there's no one in the building. Uh, and so that, that's another, another, you know, thing here, but I, 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 I think to get our arms around this. It would be helpful if we could figure out what it will cost, now the question is. What do we want to estimate? Well, we, I, I don't think we want to estimate maintaining, and we already know without cost. Um. What we probably want to estimate is either renovate to new or to, or to build new buildings. And, and the, the reason why we went to the elementary school was because. Renovate to new does not give us the new buildings we need, does not get the education out of the closet. Uh, out of the closets in the buildings where that's going on, because. We have no, we get no new rooms out of renovating. We get no flex space, we get nothing that we need in that regard, all we get are the existing buildings reconstituted. Because anything else would mean tearing the building down and rebuilding it, so you might as well tear it down and rebuild it and get a new building, you're going to do that. You know, but, but to renovate to new means to take what you've got and just. You know, sometimes you're going down to the bare. Frame of the building and sometimes you're not, but you're basically reconstituting what's there. So it could very well be that, that we, that we don't. And, and that's one reason why what I had suggested we, the superintendent do. Is to educate us on how an elementary education occurs these days over the course of this year, so we could learn. How we're teaching the kids, how we will be teaching the kids, how they're teaching them in, in new schools. Um, that have the facilities. And understand whether or not we want to renovate our existing buildings to new or we want to start over and, and build three new buildings. And the cost of that is not much more than renovating to new. Uh, we don't think, um. We don't know yet, that's why we need these plans, but I, I think that would be the, the better. Expenditure of money. You've got buildings that are a hundred years old, they're past their useful life, it's time to press the button and new one. I think this is, is where I come out on it, just after what I saw at the, at the two elementary schools that I, I visited. Um, yeah, Mary.
I, I was wondering about state reimbursement. Would we get state reimbursement for renovating the schools or would we only do it if we got new schools? Or one new school?
We don't know the answer to that question, um, we, we, we expect that, that. We expect that the state will want to push us in, in a direction, but I think the, um. Whether we get state money or don't get state money, if what the taxpayers want is they want. They want three schools in their towns and they want these schools to be proper and to be modernized and to be new schools. Uh, then. We'll, we'll have to spend that money because you, you make choices and you have to live with the consequences. Um, I mean, we, we have, we have, we have kicked this can down the road now for the twenty-eight years I've lived here. And we have not done anything about these glaring problems, they've only gotten worse, so. That was a choice, the choice was. Keep the bailing wire coming. And now we're at the point where the bailing wire is not effective anymore. And so we've got to do something, so I don't know what they're going, you're, 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 you're basically, you're ten steps down the road from where we are right now. We don't know that answer, we'll have to find that answer, and that might impact what the public wants to vote for. But. I think there's a reasonable way that we can get, we, we can get our hands around the number of what it would cost to have three new schools.
We should build three new schools. Who owns them? Town?
Build them on the existing sites, uh. You could, you could do it, you, if you could structure it many different ways. The, the, the region could own the building, the town could own the land, or the lease could be extended out to an extremely long term, like about the age, how long the building would last. There's a, it, it, you, you're ten steps down the road, Barry, we, we aren't even close to figuring that out. Because we don't know what the cost is of the ideas that we have. And, and we need to get that first before we can, before we can figure out how you're going to, how you're going to construct it. I will point out, the architect tells us that, that. That Booth preschool and Burnham school, the sites are deficient in terms of acres. Okay, there's, there's a rule of thumb that you're supposed to have ten acres plus an acre for each hundred kids. So that would mean eleven-acre sites for Booth and Burnham, um. And they're both about four acres, each site is around four, four and a half acres. Washington primary needs. Twelve acres, it has thirty-one. But it's all a flood plain. And, and the, and the, the water is now at the surface of the ground there. So.
Yes, except the, the counter that. Ox Ridge didn't have the land that, that they were required by that.
It, it didn't, they squeezed that school onto a much tighter site, so it is possible, it's doable. It, it's doable, you can squeeze them onto the sites. Um, I, I just don't know how much grief we would get from the state on any, if, if there was any state funding available, I don't know how much grief we would get for. For having tight sites, we might be able to get past it, you remember, Darien doesn't get very much, they get about, what, what did he say? Eleven percent or something? Yeah, they get about eleven percent reimbursement, we get thirty, we've been getting thirty-two. Uh, a lot of the cities get eighty percent. Um, just like we got for the ag science portion of our project, we got eighty percent on that. But, but, but the cities get a lot more, so that's why if you go to cities in Connecticut, you see a lot of new schools. They, they are able to get the money to build them, and they need to build them because theirs were even older than ours.
I think we would, we would have another problem. If the school is owned still, if we renovate to new and we decide to keep the old building. They want to do that. And the town owns them. But we'd have to pay. According to our percentage of population. And the last time they proposed, we proposed a renovation project, it would have meant. That Rox, Roxbury was about the same, the amount of renovations and the population was about the same. Uh, Washington would have ended up paying six million dollars to renovate a building. That was owned by another town. They're never going to vote. That's the, that's going to be a problem.
All, all right, well, it, it's, it's good for us to talk about what. Will never happen and what no one will agree to or anything like that. Uh, but that, that's not what we are, we're a regional school system, we are a region, we need to think regionally. Uh, and we need to, we need to, we need to govern ourselves accordingly. And I don't, I, I think we don't, we don't need to do is put impediments in here before we know what the problem is, let's look at the analysis done and then we can move on.
So I'm, my sense is, is that we obviously want real numbers, and so I think the bigger. Discussion right now is, is that, how do we get that? So, because I think we all can sit here tonight and kind of discuss what we think, but I. I know that it will be easier to make decisions once we have numbers. So how do we move forward? In doing that?
Well, I think.
And how soon can that happen?
Well, I, I think that what we need to start with is, we need to make a decision on what. Estimating, getting a, getting a set of plans drawn and, and a professional estimator is the way. That's how you get numbers you can feel good about, you can feel close to. Um, however, we need to make a decision of what exactly, what plans exactly do we want an architect to draw.
So are you asking the question of the board tonight to decide to choose one school? And then move forward, or, or are we collectively going to decide to do three schools?
I, I think, I think doing plans for three schools is too much money, it's not, it's an unnecessary expenditure. I think we need to start with one because one may tell us enough for us to know what the others will likely cost. And that number may break the bank and may be impossible to achieve.
So then what we would need to do then.
Who knows?
So then what we would kind of collectively decide among all of us is. You feel that way, do we, the rest of us feel that way?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, and I'm not sure we have, and I'm not sure we have enough information because the principal decision we would have to make. Is what do we want an architect to draw, what set of plans? A brand-new school building?
Hmm.
Or a renovation to new of some existing school?
Hmm.
And, um, if. Just depending on which way we go will depend on what we have them draw the plans for, and that's something that's going to require input from Mark and his staff.
Hmm.
To, uh, to let us, to let us understand. What the limitations are of our existing buildings and whether or not they can be amended. Remember, the sites are tight, so you can't really add very much to them, but the question is whether they can be amended. To give us the spaces we need in order for these schools to function. And, and whether that will even work, whether, whether we have a critical, not critical enough mass to accomplish. Under those circumstances, and that, and that's why that information needs to come in before we can make a decision, so we can't really make a decision tonight. The point tonight was just to, to present these reports and explain to you what they do well. And, and what information they leave for further analysis.
Right, but it is important that collectively that we decide how we want to move forward.
Yes.
So that's partly why we're having the conversation, so that we all collectively can make that decision.
That's right.
Right.
It, it's a board decision, it's coming to the board. Um. I, I just, I just think that, that there's a lot of issues and they all have to be properly laid on the table and be understood, so that we can make a, a decision with the best. Of information in front of us, I think that's what, that's what we need to do. Um. So Mark, I don't know when we can expect to receive. Some input. On. Our buildings, the limitations they impose, how, how education is delivered. What, uh, it, it's probably multiple meetings, it's probably not all going to occur at one meeting, but the question is. Can, can we start to tee this stuff up to get the information we need to make the decision of what plans to be drawn?
I mean, we could certainly. Get the board any information that they need, um, would have to be much more specific, I think, in terms of. What the, the requests are, um. You know, one thing that schools are masterful about is, you know. Kind of evolving in, to whatever it is that, that we have, that we've done here, right? Um, so if you're asking us to say in a, you know, perfect world, what, what are the things we, we should be. Could have, that, that's one set of, you know, ideas and, and proposals that we're coming with. If anyone would say, how do we keep doing the same thing that we're doing with different facilities, well, that's a different proposal, right, so. You know, we want to have some real clear direction in terms of what the ask is.
Alex, yeah, I think since most of you have not seen this report until the last several days. And there's a lot of things that need to be decided, I, I think that. To even decide what we're going to decide yet is premature, I'd like to noodle these numbers. Uh, go through the report more deeply. Um, and maybe at the next meeting, sit down and. And I don't even know if we'll come to an agreement at the next meeting, but at least we'll have all had a chance to think about it. Digest what you've heard tonight. Um, and, uh, we can then proceed from there, but I think it's way too early to do any kind of a decision on anything.
I, I agree with you, I think that, I, I think there's a lot to digest. In these reports, there's a lot of information that's going to be presented to us, and then I think we'll be in a position. Uh, to make a decision, and we, we can't go crazy about worrying about what inflation's going to be. Uh, if it takes us a couple of years to figure this out. Um, it, it, you know, I hate to say it is what it is, but it is what it is. And, uh, sometimes. Sometimes inflation does drive up the price. But if the bond market, in the meantime, the rates drop. Then you're back where you started, you haven't lost it, because you ended up getting very favored rates. On the other hand, if rates go up and inflation goes up and we get put into a spiral of. This really hurts. But. You know, we've got to make the right decision, this is really the future of elementary education in this region. And we have to figure it out, we have to do it right, and I think in terms of what we need from the, from the administration. I'm not asking for the, the. If we had unlimited money, what we would do, what I'm asking is. How do we teach kids? How do we educate kids then? What do we do that's different? What do we do, what direction is this head in, is it, is it taking us in, and what direction are we heading? Um, but, um. We, I suspect that our buildings are not. Giving us the spaces we need, or you wouldn't have somebody in a closet. Okay? Our buildings are deficient. And the question is, how could they be better, how could they help us educate better? You know, if you can do targeted interventions. In a way that allows you to target a kid's specific difficulty with a given subject, say it's in reading. Say it's a vocabulary issue or something like that, or a phonics issue. You can, by intervening at the right time and acting up, when you can boost their reading level, to the point that they come out. And if their reading level is higher, everything they do in school for the rest of their school career is. Their position in life is better. So this is not something to be trivially, you know, played with. That, you know, we don't really care about whether or not we can do the best, we should do the best, our, our people deserve it. It's not like we don't have the money to do the best, we do. We do, the, the, the demand that is made of the taxpayers in this region. Is among the lowest in the state. Now, it doesn't mean it doesn't hurt when you pay your taxes twice a year. But I'm just telling you that it's not like we're struggling. And it's not like we have such a large school population that we put a huge burden on the taxpayer, we have a very small school population. Even if you had all the kids in one building, it would be, wouldn't be three hundred kids. So the point is, with that kind of burden, with, with that kind of burden of the, of the three schools is affordable. And, and, and it's, it's something we can do, but we should do the best job for our kids, I think they deserve. To have the best job done so they can have the best success in life. And we continue to have the best success in life, because let me tell you, it's not an easy world that we live in. I don't know what to tell you, anyway, uh, a lot more information to come. But that's, those are the reports for what they're worth. Any other questions? Expressions? Well, if there is, and now you know why I wanted to move up that graduation date thing, because otherwise at this point, we would have forgotten about it. If there's nothing further to come before the board, if no one objects, we have time to determine this meeting to be adjourned at.